Everybody, all of you. For the Education Board.
This is Kirk Hill. Here. This is Crabtree.
Here.
Mr. Gambiani.
Here.
This is Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Madison.
Here.
Mr. Paulson.
Here.
And Mr. Roman.
Here.
Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I welcome the witness to the flag of the United States of America. We are the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now have the pleasure of having the communication with our host school. Mr. Claypool.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Wheaton Memorial South High School. Those of you behind me, welcome as well. This is an exciting time of year for any high school, and South obviously is no exception. We are in the transition into our spring activities, which means that the parking lot is full, even on a otherwise calm Wednesday night. We have the auditorium filled with preparations for our variety show that's next weekend, as well as all the other activities. However, what is about to descend upon Wheaton Memorial South on Friday and Saturday is a whole other matter. We are hosting the Coral Classic, which, for those of you who aren't familiar with it, is probably one of, if not the biggest, showbar event in the nation. And I'm not just saying that as a biased showbar dad. We will have 25 schools here representing six states. We even have a school from Burbank, California, coming to this event. Among the schools, 19 grand championships have been won by them in previous competitions this year. Three of them are undefeated this year. Wheaton North is competing. Good luck. It is, it is a remarkable competition. We're excited about it. Needless to say, a little nervous, but we look forward to showcasing South and all the wonderful things that the arts bring to all of our schools. Show choir is an extension of kind of dance, theater, and music, and it's a wonderful opportunity for students with those skill sets to display those talents on a very grand scale. If you haven't been, you need to see what the orange and black gym looks like for a show choir event. You would not recognize it. So we're very excited about that, as well as all the other activities. We're equally excited, though, about a lot of the things that are going on in our classrooms right now. What's beginning to take place as a result of the FIT Guide, that I know the board has, you know, some reference to, is beginning to become very exciting. We have identified two different standards that we are particularly focusing in on in terms of that FIT Guide. Standards mastery and creation collaboration. And as our teachers continue to embrace it, and we're not there 100%, I can't begin to go there right now because I have students behind me who will call me out, probably, if I try to suggest otherwise, but we are making progress. Weekly, monthly, by semester, we're making progress in trying to create the learning environment for our students that research, and frankly, in some ways, just common sense tells us, is what's best for our kids. We have a walkthrough guide that we use in our building that is based primarily on the standards of those two pillars of the FIT Guide that we use when we do brief visits to our classrooms to try to give teachers feedback on what we've observed. Now, again, there are sometimes five, 10-minute visits, and sometimes you don't see a lot of the things that you would see if you were there an entire period, but we're able to give them feedback based upon those items that have been identified by it. We see it also taking place in other parts departmentally, and I'm just going to name a few because I could name them all, but I don't want to take a lot of time here. Our science department, through the modeling that takes place, and I know that our board and a lot of people in our community have become increasingly familiar with that. Kids are working together collaboratively, remember the words of the FIT Guide, collaboratively to create presentations for one another. They have to work together. They have to find ways to solve problems together. They are also creating questions that they can pose one another and their peers during their presentations. In our math department, we're starting to see strong pursuits toward mastery of the learning of the subject matter. Teachers are teaching the content by learning targets. They're giving them brief assessments, otherwise known as formative assessments, and sometimes it's as simple as this, this, or, you know, in the middle. Sometimes they're quizzes, but they're trying to find out how the kids are doing, and based upon that feedback, they're giving students opportunities to learn it a second time, and then even have a chance to retest or reassess. Now, at first, for some of us, at least my generation, you think, well, no, you didn't get it, you move on, or you didn't get it. How can you compare the performance of a kid who had two or three opportunities to those who got it the first time? Well, in our society at least, whether you're taking the bar exam or a driver's license exam, you get multiple opportunities to demonstrate mastery. And we're starting to see that take place in our schools as well, and it's exciting to see that being embraced. And a third department that I'll mention briefly is in our English department in terms of writing. There's nothing uncommon about the process approach to writing that's taking place in our school. Students create part of their draft. They share with a peer. They share with a teacher. They're given feedback. They go back. They revise it. They continue to work with it until it's a more polished product. Isn't that novel, given that's how the writing industry works on a daily basis? So whether, what department, and I just mentioned three right there, we are finding increasing opportunities for our students to experience those pillars, and I tip of the hat to Faith and her other folks who've worked on that FIT Guide. That is starting to resonate in our schools. Again, we'll get better. We'll be better next year than we are this year, but some great things are beginning to happen. But probably the most exciting thing that's taking place is in our freshman core program. Last summer, groups of people worked to identify students who weren't quite meeting the expectations we would hope for all of our kids. And they identified those students and began to assign them to different classes. We had eight teachers who volunteered to be a part of this program, two math, two science, two English, two social studies, created two different teams. They meet on a regular basis to talk about these and other students, but primarily these kids. And every day, they talk about what worked, what didn't work, what did we learn about this student that might be applicable to other teachers, because a lot of this is about relationships. And through that process, we begin, we have begun to make some headroom. What they found out, though, first semester, it was a challenge. It was tough. They weren't making the kind of progress that they had hoped. In fact, it was quite frustrating, and in some cases, teachers were saying, I can't keep doing this. We asked them what they wanted. They knew that they needed to have their kids work together collaboratively, but they knew that they, as instructors, didn't have the skill set or the expertise yet to pull that off successfully. So Aaron Maxerson is here this evening, and Lori Campos put together a day-long workshop for our teachers to expose them to the proper way of using cooperative learning in the classroom, one of the most well-researched best practices in education. Immediately, in some cases, literally that day, teachers went back to their class, implemented some of the things that they were taught, and found success right away. It has been a resounding success. Again, we're not perfect. We're not having the kind of success that we will in two or three or four years from now. The great things are happening, and what's best is that word of mouth is spread up, the understanding of the need for collaborative groups and successfully putting kids together to be, to be, to learn academically and be successful is out there at Wheaton Memorial South, because they practice not only academic success, but they also work on social emotional learning skills. They practice what it is to demonstrate impurging behavior, for example. We have a learning gap at Wheaton Memorial South, as every school, large school, public school, that has a diverse population. We're not going to close that gap overnight, and I think everyone in front of me and behind me knows that. But with the things that I've talked about tonight and with other things that are undoubtedly about to come, I feel very excited, as not only the principal of Wheaton Memorial South, but as a father here, that great things are about to happen, because as our motto at the start of the year was, we are 100% for 100%, and I think we're well on our way. So thank you, and again, welcome to everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Claypool. Are there any modifications to the agenda?
I'd like to potentially table, which item is it here? The action item, uh, action item two regarding the purpose of the contract extension. Because we're not at the phase of the meeting where the motion is appropriate, all we can do is get consensus. If there's consensus on the tabling, it will be tabled. If there's any objection to the tabling, then the motion to table can be brought up when the action item itself is brought up. Is there consensus on tabling it? Does anybody object? If there are any objections, just simply raise your hand. Yes.
I should know. Would that prevent it from then going back?
Well, Joanne, since there is no consensus to table the motion now, we will bring, the motion will be brought up as an action item. At that time, if Jim wishes to present a motion to table, then we can have a formal vote, but since there is no consensus on Jim's request right now, we're just going to move ahead on the agenda.
Recognitions and achievements. Dr. Schuler.
Thank you. I'm going to invite Mr. Claypool and Mr. Biskin to come back up to the podium, and they're going to start. We had, certainly as the board is well aware, we've got a great crowd this evening for, I think, a very exciting reason, in that we're celebrating some of the achievement of, not some of, we're celebrating the achievement of some of our finest students this evening at both of our high schools, and so I'm going to let Mr. Biskin and Mr. Claypool get a start and tell us a little bit about that recognition.
Well, we're obviously very excited and proud to have the young men and women who are here this evening represent our schools. To be a national merit finalist is a remarkable accomplishment, and I think sometimes at schools like ours, we take these types of recognitions for granted, and I know that the board doesn't, but I want to make sure that we, as a community, do not take it for granted, because what these young people have done is truly remarkable on a national level. They're not only great students, they represent our schools in very, very positive ways. Sorry to speak to you, Mr. Biskin, too much, but I know that that's probably, and that will be true for North, but they're remarkable young people. So if we could have Erica, who's running the show here, have our parents come up, have our South folks come to this side, please, parents and students, and then the North, students and parents to this side, please. If I could ask, would you mind reaching yourself alphabetically, please? Solve an equation or two before you make your way there. Trust me, I don't want to push it too hard. Okay. We'll just, yeah, we'll just go with this. Folks, what we'd like you to do, guys, parents and students, when your name is announced, if you wouldn't mind making your way to our Board of Education here, they would like to personally wish you their congratulations, and shake your hand, and thank you for everything that you've accomplished, and wish you well as you make your way down the road. So first off, for Wheaton Memorial South, it would be Liz Bray. Kyle Kearns. Nicholas Kearns. Jeff Taylor. John Larson. And John Stockton.
Before I present the Wheaton North side, I must say that the blue and gold balloons look very good here.
They were nice.
I wonder how quickly they'll be taken down, right? Wheaton North is also proud, and we have five national merit finalists. I think what I'm most proud of with all of our students that are here tonight, they have a real desire, a real passion to learn. They are learners. They're not just students. They are learners. They want to learn more. They have the skills to learn more, and they apply those skills. So we are very, very proud of them. At this time, Patrick Bomer, give him a round of applause. Ellen Collier. Allison Croll. Colleen Ward. And Andrew Wells. Also, at this time, I would like to recognize Wheaton North Junior, Liz Spurlock, and her mother, Lynn Polly, and grandmother, Eleanor Polly. Liz was a finalist for the Prudential Spirit of America Award and earned the President's Volunteer Service Award for her charity work. Liz has raised nearly $10,000 by selling sneakers that she hand paints with athletic team logos through her project, Custom Team Kicks. Through her work, she has sold 250 pairs of sneakers in the past two years, and she donates a percentage of all sneaker sales to benefit two charities, one that promotes pediatric cancer research and one that promotes animal welfare. Let's give a big round of applause for Liz Spurlock. Thanks for being here.
Yeah, parents and students, we're so honored and so pleased to have you here, and you're welcome to stay for the entire board with you if you wish, but if you think you might want to leave right now, please feel free to do so.
The next item on the agenda are public comments. The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a question or comment on the agenda item. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values for thoughts and questions. The board strives to make the best decisions for the district, and public input in a variety of venues is very helpful. The board must protect the civility and decorum of this meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board and the democratic process in your comments tonight. Please use the microphone and state your name and whether you are resident of the district. Address your comments to the board. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please be factual and courteous, and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. If you feel your matter needs to be discussed in more detail, please attend the board's chance to chat or present your comments to us in writing. We do have one person that signed up for public comments, Jeanne Schenlick. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Yeah. My husband's paws. My name is Jeanne Kamelik, and I am a resident. My sons Charlie and Thomas have been wonderfully served and are still being wonderfully served by District 200. Math education is both my calling and my passion. I'm in my 19th year as an educator. I teach sixth grade math currently in a neighboring district. From 2005 until 2013, I was a math specialist in that same district, and when I saw the agenda for this evening, I was overjoyed. I can't even, that's an understatement, for what I see as being proposed this evening. These personnel, should you approve the action item number one, will provide much-needed expertise. I can speak to this because of my perspective and the fact that I loved what I did for eight years and I missed students, so now that I'm back in the classroom, everything I learned and did is, has made me a much better teacher. I thought I was really good when I left. I was wrong. Now I'm a little bit better. These personnel, they'll help identify dyscalculia in struggling learners. They'll move children beyond math anxiety. They'll support teachers as they dig deeper into the common core of math practices and bring those alive in the classroom, not just content, but the practices. Do you persevere? Are you going to continue to work hard? Are you going to look for structure so that you can use this repeatedly in all of your So is it not our responsibility in this math and technological world to provide math learners and educators support as equitably as we do literacy? As a math educator and as a literate human being, I would say yes, and I hope that you do indeed approve these personnel positions that are being on the action item number one. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Kamelik. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Schuler.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. I have just a couple of things that I wanted to share with the board tonight under my report, and Faith does not know I'm going to put her on the spot here for this, but I think it's going to be really easy for her to do, and that's, I'd like for her to just talk for a few seconds about Friday's Professional Development Day, because it ties directly to one of the board's goals around the revamping of your science curriculum to align it with next-generation science standards. And it was a super exciting day on Friday that actually connected to one of the things Mr. Claypool mentioned even earlier about science department here, and I think some nice opportunity for training. So Faith, would you just give the board a little update on that?
Sure. Friday was really exciting. We had all of the elementary teachers in the district over at Hubble. It was the kickoff of the next-generation science standards, and a lot of comments and emails that have come back that it was one of the best institute days in 20 years. So a lot of excitement. We started off with having Phil Coquese come, he's the South Science Department Chair, came over and gave a really good hands-on example about what they're doing at the high school, so we could see the connection there. We also had the men's a cappella group here from South who volunteered to redo three songs with science lyrics to kind of get us pumped up and energized about that. And then we had 20 different sessions, community members, actual engineers, every spectrum of how you could handle the science standards for teachers to choose from, and then the afternoon was hands-on engineering practices, and where they actually got in and built the things that we're going to have students do next year, because the key takeaway was that next-generation science standards is all about students getting in and creating collaboratively. It's a lot different than reading about a science or watching an experiment and then copying an experiment. It's about getting in and thinking and doing, and there was just, there was a lot of great, great excitement, and people are feeling pumped and ready to get on to these next science standards. That isn't the only training that's going to happen. I have a half-day with all the grade levels toward the end of the school year as well, but it was really well received. Bridget Moore, my new elementary director of instruction, just did an incredible job organizing all of that, and it was, it was a great day.
Thank you, Faith, and certainly heard very similar feedback, and I think just interesting to note, I wanted to start by asking Stalkwist to share that update. There are several items on your agenda this evening that, again, are coming directly from the feedback that the board was, was very, very thoughtful several years ago in approaching that community engagement process and really listening from, from the community. You've got that item on the science standards under your action agenda this evening with the work around the master facility plan. Again, I think something came directly from the community, the math coaching and intervention, something that I think you heard directly from the community that they wanted to see for their schools, as well as under your consent agenda this evening, you're approving a couple of things around technology as a part of the master technology plan. Again, I think, you know, something you heard directly from the community, so I think, I probably don't often enough do enough of a job of just making sure that we overtly connect the feedback we got for Engage 200 to the work that you're doing, but tonight's agenda is certainly littered with items that, that connect to that. A couple of other things I just wanted to mention for the board this evening. We recently, actually, Dr. Rammer just recently pushed out a survey around the school calendar. That was one of the things that we had mentioned, we had some discussion at our Teaching and Learning Committee, committee, around a few of the things, the learning things related to calendar, but one of the things that we did indicate we wanted to do was get some feedback from the community, and my understanding is with that only having been out for a short time, I think there've already been about 2,300 responses to that survey. So again, if you, you want an item that energizes people to fill out a survey and participate, certainly, calendar is, is one of them. We also, I think, had shared earlier that through the work that one of our rotary groups did just recently, we continued with one of our food pantries. So the Noon Rotary Club this year is part of their fundraiser back in December, raised enough money to sponsor over 20 food pantries, 13 of them, I believe, are happening this year, and I think if I have the, the figure right, with each of our mobile food pantries, we're able to feed 120 families within our community. Those are District 200 residents, and so, again, that's a very positive thing. Mentioned to the board on the finance side, we did receive our second categorical payment from the state, so those are now fully in and paid. Now, we're right at the time when the third payment should be getting released, and they have not seen those yet, but again, at least that second quarter categorical payment has come in. And then, again, just an update, we have a couple of important bids that are out, and Mr. Farley held a pre-bid meeting on our transportation bid. Obviously, that's a big service that has great importance to our community. I believe there were five companies that attended the pre-bid meeting, which is probably a little more than perhaps we would have, would have anticipated, but that, that will be coming, and then we also just recently released the bid for the cost estimating services tied to the master facility plan. Again, that was something that the Facility Committee shared, I think, a meeting ago, and that is out now, and again, we held a pre-bid meeting on that as well, and how many firms? Nine firms, I think, showed up to the pre-bid meeting on that, so all very good things. And then you heard Mr. Claypool mention the show choir event. Also, I believe tomorrow Franklin begins their annual dodgeball event. It's one of their big... It's one of their big community fundraisers as well. So tomorrow afternoon, Friday, if you're looking for something to do, I think Mr. Gambiani, you might be participating in that event. So stay safe, please. That's it.
Can I just ask a quick question? On the calendar survey, how have we, I haven't seen it, and I'm a parent, so how did that get out there for parents to be able to respond?
I presented to all the emails that we have in our, in our listing for, for parents and staff.
Blackboard.
We have, we have a little bit more. We sent it through Blackboard. Through Blackboard? And we said, so the sender would be?
Any other comments or questions for Dr. Shubert? Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The following items on the consent agenda for today. Number one, acceptance of gifts from Lowell PTA. Two, approval of ACT expenditure for testing. Three, approval to purchase laptops for middle and high school staff. Four, approval of buyout of elementary desktops for lease. Five, approval of 2016-17 fee schedule. Six, approval of the resolution to authorize transfer, repayable inter-fund loan from working cash fund to IMRF fund. Seven, resolution to amend and restate the Community Unit School District 200 Section 125 medical flexible spending account, dependent care flexible spending account, and pre-tax premium plan. Eight, approval of 10-year life safety survey for the district to be completed by Leggett Architects. Nine, approval of bills payable and payroll. Ten, approval of minutes, February 10, 2016, open and closed. February 22, 2016, special meeting, open and closed. February 24, 2016, committee of the whole, and approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to October 2014 as allowable by law. Eleven, approval of personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative, certified, classified, and non-union staff. Are there any items board members want removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Any information from staff? Dr. Shubert?
Just the one thing I wanted to mention on item two, the approval of the ACT expenditure for testing. So just again, recognize this year that the state of Illinois did put out a procurement for a college entrance exam. SAT did win that bid, but it has not yet been funded in the state of Illinois. And so we had built that item into the budget this year under the anticipation that it wasn't likely, that there was going to be state funding, should the state in the future choose to actually fund one of those assessments. Certainly, within the Teaching and Learning Committee, we would have that discussion. But our thought process this year was as long as they weren't paying for it anyway, we were going to continue to administer the test that we've got trend information on. And certainly, our families have been kind of under the understanding it was going to continue to be administered. So just wanted to mention that.
Question on that. If we fund that, does that cause us to have access to the information? Or if we didn't fund it, would we still have access to the information?
If we didn't fund it, we would, we would like, we would still see results, but only from the students that chose to take that test on their own. So I don't think you would have comparable results because it would not be a universally-administered test. It would be one only available to the students that chose to sign up and pay for it on their own, which would very likely mean you would not have, certainly at least in terms of trend information, for looking at some of the items on your dashboard, you would not have that kind of trend learning information anymore.
Okay, so we'll have that trend information because all students will be taking it. And that'll be during what I'll call a normal school day.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments regarding the consent agendas?
I just wanted to ask the staff to clarify the approval of the resolution to authorize a transfer from working cash to IMRF, because I know there were some questions ahead of time about this. But it seems to me that, you know, has there been a point in the past where we've not ever repaid this? Is there a likelihood that we wouldn't repay it? Is it the same thing? I don't know. When was the last time we did not have to do this transfer? I guess is part of my, it seems to me we do some sort of transfers every year, and this is routine. Is there a reason for us to be concerned at this point in time versus any other year?
Mr. Farley, you want to answer that?
Sure. You know, I'll start with the board's fund balance policy at 25% and why it's so important. And obviously, that's a cash flow issue as the district receives the tax money in September and June of each fiscal year. And then the state money is sprinkled in there sometimes very intermittently. So the reason to have that cash fund balance is so important. We do annually borrow money from the working cash fund, which is the equivalent of our savings account, and transfer it to separate funds of the school district. We've done the Education Fund and Transportation Fund pretty regularly as a course of action. The IMRF fund, we have done the last few years, and part of the reason we've done that is because we had an IMRF audit and they said we were carrying too much fund balance in that account. So we had to lower that fund balance down as a result of that audit. So now we're, you know, things are a little tighter, so we do that loan to the IMRF fund. But once the June taxes are received, we do repay all, usually the June and September taxes come in and we will repay those loans and have to repay them by the end of the calendar year. So again, this is normal, pretty standard operating for the school district.
Yeah, one comment I'd like to make as part of the Finance Committee, we've talked about this in the past. I'm not sure that multiple years ago, we approved it each time, you know, each time we made a loan. And these are really loans, not transfers. And I personally think there's a distinction between those things, but you know, in reality, this, the way the wording is, we've talked about, and I think we may revise this wording in the future, but it is a loan. And it will be repaid from the tax money received in January, or in June, I should say. You know, and this is pretty much normal course of business for most school districts. And, you know, because, if you think of it in terms of, we get tax money twice a year to fund our year. One comes in September, one comes in June, and we incur costs evenly throughout the year. So we always really, in most funds, unless we have a large fund balance, have to borrow to pay until we receive those May or June receipts. It's just normal course. And that's why we have a working cash fund and a fund balance, you know, and why we can't deteriorate fund balance. If we didn't do this, or we didn't have a fund balance or a fund balance policy, we would have to borrow on tax warrants and pay interest and so on. So, you know, these are really normal course, but the idea is that we have to approve them all the time so that we are unnoticed, that, you know, that it happens. And that's, you know, it's really truly normal course of business. And I think we'll probably, if, when we look at the financial statement, I think we'll be borrowing more on some of the funds in the, before the year is up, you know, possibly. So I don't know, we can talk about that at that time. But, you know, so this, you know, I can only say from the Finance Committee, we talk about this and we've addressed this, and it's expected.
Any other comments or questions? I'd like to thank all the members of the board for timely submitting your email questions on Monday and Tuesday to the staff here so we could prompt response and expedite matters tonight. So thank you for doing that. I'll ask for a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
It's moved.
Moved by Mrs. Krabt?
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Paulson. Mrs. Senator, would you please call a vote on the motion?
Mrs. Krabtrey?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaka?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Roman? I'm sorry, Mrs. Kaka?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes. And the motion passes. We now move on to action items. The first action item is to approve the Elementary Math Instructional Support Proposal. Dr. Shubert?
And I'm going to introduce Mrs. Stalquist to make a couple of comments on this proposal. But I just wanted to share with the board that this proposal's coming to you after having been reviewed and discussed at the Teaching and Learning Committee, and they unanimously and I think with great support felt the desire to bring this forward to the board. It really connects two areas that the board has had discussion about in the past. One, certainly, some of our achievement data around math and some of the opportunities that we've noticed to address some areas within our math data. And then two, within the professional development discussion and planning, a lot of discussion on how we best support our teachers to address some of those learning opportunities. And so that really kind of brought this opportunity forward. So Faith?
Thank you. The need for the elementary math coaching and also math interventions, it's really been identified through a lot of sources. If you recall, at the Engage 200 sessions, one of the things that came from that is the community saying that there's a need to provide resources for interventions and also for professional development for our staff. We've been doing a good job of that at the elementary level with reading. We have not been providing those resources as much as we should be in math. And you see some of those things that play out with that. Our park data shows that our ELA scores are much more, we have a lot higher student proficiency level with ELA than we do with math. Also, I've done a lot of work this year with our multi-tiered systems of support committees, and that's kind of the new verbiage for RTI, Response to Intervention, where you need to have not only a really strong core and building up that, and that's why the need for that coaching, but also what do the interventions look like and who can deliver those interventions? And we're lacking in that area. So as we've worked with that committee, they've helped to really identify what that need is and gone beyond that of what that support piece should look like. So I've spent time with that committee that involves a membership from every single elementary school and the principals to really think about if we were to move forward with math coaching and interventions, what it would look like. And the proposal that you have tonight, and I know you've all read it, so I won't recap all of that, is that every single one of our elementary schools would get at least a half-day coaching position. Most of that time would be at the buildings, but some of that would be with me and with Bridget Moore, so we can provide some continuity on what they look like and also coaching on how to coach with that piece. And then we would be using our Title I dollars to, we have five Title I schools. Those schools would receive a full day, so their half-day person would actually become a full day when we use the extra Title I dollars to provide that extra support. You saw in here already that with just the half-day, we're going to start off with primary intervention, K1, 2, get that really, really solid. The Title I schools will have a little bit more flexibility to work beyond that. And then if this passes and a couple of years goes by, that we now feel that we want to expand that coaching piece or move it from some of the primary grades. Once we're sure that that's solid, that might change. But the focus at the beginning of this is approved is to work with K1 and 2. One of the interesting things that came about from the committee is the real desire not to just have coaching and the intervention piece, but be able to do enrichment for those students that are above the standards at grades one and two as well. So what the committee is committed to doing is increasing the amount of minutes of instruction in math from 60 to 75 for all of our students that are in all-day kindergarten, first or second grade, and utilizing that person while they're working with some of the lower students that really need that in small groups to differentiate and have shared students so that we go above and beyond for our students that are above the standards at first and second grade as well. You probably saw on the last page, just we've already identified how we're going to measure the success of this, looking at decreasing the achievement gap and also looking at pushing more students to the exceeds level on our own district math assessments. Entertaining questions?
I have a question on the, I think you asked one. I'm just a little confused that, you know...
Talks about we're taking, excuse me, we're talking about we're taking money from, not from, but we're, there's some new money, you know, we're netting a $15,000 cost is what's stated in here. But we have $332,000 of Title II and $228,000 from Title I. I assume that's not new money we're getting from some federal source or something?
We do anticipate getting a little more Title I money because our percentage of low-income students has gone up, but you're correct that it's a reallocation of that. If you recall, we had used some of our Title I monies to purchase additional Chromebooks. And that was one of the allocations we've used that for. They've changed those guidelines. We're no longer allowed to use that money for that. So while we had used it for Chromebooks, we're not allowed to do that anymore. And that same chunk of money then, we would put toward this. So it's not that something else has to go in order to be, in order to allocate this money from Title I to the math positions.
Okay, so I mean, nothing to say about the...
The, you know, like, some of the money was used for buying equipment that we can no longer do. But I assume that's not the whole, almost $550,000 there? You know, I'm talking about the 330 and the 228, $560,000. Okay. So my point is, we're taking, I guess I'm trying to determine, part of it is we're not going to have, or we can't use it to buy computers. But I would have thought we, if this is not totally new money, that we're taking it away from some other place that we were spending it. And I'm curious what that takeaway is and so on. And I have one other follow-up question.
Okay. With the Title II money, because that's the largest chunk of that, we have been rolling over some of that money each year. So we haven't been spending the entirety of that each year. And then one of the things that has recently been freed up from that money, the teachers on assignment that had been working in my department that we pushed to the administrators for my director position, that chunk of salary can't come from the Title II funds anymore. So that's part of the absorption of that cost, but that had happened almost a year and a year and a half ago. So we do have a chunk of that money that was not being utilized.
Okay, so time to stand again.
But even though it wasn't being utilized, it was available. I'm curious a little bit why we didn't ask for it in the past. But secondarily, or more importantly, is this a sustainable flow of dollars going forward?
I just want to clarify, where Title I monies, you have to use all of it or within 15% of it or you don't get it. Title II, that money rolls. So it isn't that if you don't spend all of it, you lose it, like some grants, or that if you don't ask for it, you don't get it. You get your allotment. If you don't spend it all, it does roll to the, to the next school year. You asked a good question about, you know, with federal grants. There's been no word that the federal grants for these types of things is changing. I do think when we are looking at No Child Left Behind and it all being reauthorized, we don't know yet what all that's going to look like. But I do not see that funding for this type of thing is going to diminish. In fact, there's starting to be some things about if you're paying for coaching and doing that, that you might even get more money for this type of opportunity.
And I guess the last question, we're actually adding staff here. We're not moving staff that's teaching the classroom into this category currently.
Correct.
Those are my questions.
Any other questions or comments of the staff?
Does the after, before and after-school program, do they do, help kids with homework and things, or is it mostly supervising?
It's just supervising with that, but you probably saw in here the extended day, that's a different program. So while there's the BASF after-school program, that's not, you know, it can be a little helper supervising. We're also at our Title I buildings running an extended day, which we're actually targeting, creating math lessons for and targeting that instruction, which is different than the after-school program. So I wasn't sure which one you were identifying.
So I think I missed that. So we have born after, which is just kind of like daycare-ish.
There's some academic components to it, but what is briefly talked about in the document that's attached to the board report is we're running an extended day after-school, hiring our own teachers just to teach math and bringing in, we've piloted some math software programs and gave a pre-assessment of where those students are at and running that for an hour a day after-school with snacks and all of that to see how far we can make it with just the after-school component. And we're using that opportunity to also pilot some of the things we would consider for math so we can judge their effectiveness.
And that's for K1 children?
That's also for grades three, four, five. Each school got to look at their allotment. We also provide transportation home after that is over. They decided where their weaknesses were and also which students and staff would be interested in participating, but that is a K5 project.
Was there some discussion ever about, like at the apartments with the... Was there some discussion ever about, like at the apartments with their little rec center of getting some help there? Did we ever do that?
We have done that at some of our schools where the staff goes to the community center and provides that tutoring or the support. We've also done some things before school starts in August that we do, getting a jumpstart on school. And some of our staff, we've paid them to go to the community center and run reading programs and some quick studies in math to kind of hope to recover what some students learn over, lose over the summer so they're ready to go in the fall.
Any other questions or comments, staff?
Not really a question, just two comments really quickly. I have to commend the administration for always seeming to figure out how to do this without asking for a lot of additional money. Looking at the breakdown of costs and the sources of revenue, it's very clear to me in this that we're making choices within where our costs are going to reallocate some things to something that's really important to our students and our student performance, but also something that was mentioned directly in Engage 200. So I love the fact that we're able to do this in ways that isn't always about a pile of money. And then secondly, just for the audience, this proposal's not just kind of outlining a new step, but there's also measurements at three different levels. So I really appreciate how those have been articulated at different levels and tying to kind of measuring if we're being successful in this reallocation and this time investment. So no questions, I just very supportive of this.
Faith, I'll support the measure. I just have a, I'm kind of intrigued by, the PARC data is very new, right? I mean, that's just one exam, is that true?
Yes.
So the question I have is, what data that we have before that didn't reveal this shortcom, this short, if you will, the shortcoming of the math need, and all of a sudden PARC data reveals this? I'm just kind of intrigued by that.
I'm glad you asked that question because that isn't my intent of the board report. I've talked with SLT prior to this year about the need for math coaches. When I first came on board and we looked at, all right, we've got Common Core in both areas to do, what are we going to do first? Looked at our own district assessment data, ISAT data, and what I saw from classrooms and knew that math was where we need to start. So from multiple sources, our own data, ISAT data, PARC data, my classroom observations, we need more support in math. I did cite the most recent data in the report with PARC, but that was not new news to me that we need to become better in our math instruction.
In short, Faith, the PARC data, the PARC information is consistent with the other information we were getting over the years. This is something that we had targeted and actually community engagement and really identifying. Any other questions?
Just one more comment. I want to make kind of a little tangent to this, but we've talked about it before. So there is a bill floating out there in, actually, I think it's right now in the Illinois House. Illinois charges a premium when you use federal grant dollars to support staff. They charge a TRS premium. It's not really a penalty. It's just a premium that the state kind of puts on to that. And I don't know that that bill is necessarily going to get a ton of legs because for Illinois to reverse that practice, it means they punch another hole in their budget that already obviously is a little bit behind. But that is a good bill for us to continue to support because if that were to go through, the grand dollars that Faith talks about would go far further than they currently are. So what you're able to do under this proposal for $15,000 in kind of increased local contribution would go way below that if we were to be able to use those grand dollars without paying a penalty. So there's a relation there. We're going to, we'll keep fighting for that.
I hear of I will ask for a motion in a second to approve the elementary math instructional support proposal as presented.
So moved?
Moved by Mrs. Intahar. Seconded by Mr. Matheson. Mr. Senator, would you please call a roll vote?
Mrs. Intahar?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Craftrey?
Yes.
Mr. Campiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Cracker?
Yes.
Mrs. Paulson?
Yes.
Yes, the motion passes. The second action item is approval of Phase 4 authorization of contract with Perkins and Will. Dr. Schuler?
So the last board meeting, the facility committee provided the board with an update on a couple of the items that we're going to come to you this evening that have been previously discussed within the facility committee. And included in that is the last phase of the master facility planning process for this year. So just kind of at the onset, and Mr. Farley's going to share a couple of things just to kind of get an update on what's been going on. But when we entered into the agreement to develop the master facility plan this year, we knew that that plan had four phases to it. So this is not new information that we're entering into a fourth phase. I think the facility committee recommended that rather than approve the contract all at one time at the beginning of the year, that we break that contract into three phases this year. And so really, Phase 1, that was approved, I think back in June of 2015, got us started in the master facility planning process, a lot of the initial data gathering as well as the identification of needs within each of the buildings, the development of the guided principles. As we got into Phase 3 of the master facility plan, that was approved by the board back in October, we began to then look at solutions to the needs that were identified. And there were actually three additional community engagement sessions where those needs were turned into concepts on how those needs could be addressed. Those concepts continued to get refined. And again, if you've had an opportunity to be at our community engagement sessions, you've seen those concepts by building and the way that they've gotten refined. At the last session then, we began to put some cost to that. And so I'm going to let Mr. Farley just go through a couple of slides with some updates on what that's going to look like. We are not going to review all 20 buildings this evening and the concept drawings with them, but just want to make sure that kind of the board understands what that's looked like before we recommend your action this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. In your green folder, you have a copy of this diagram. And being the visual person I am, I thought it'd be good to include in the presentation to illustrate the road we've traveled here so far in our facility master planning process. And as Dr. Schuler mentioned, we had three community engagement sessions. I'd be have to go back. The board approved moving to Phase 3 in October. So as you look at that section of Phase 3, where that really is a time travel from October of 2015 through today as we ask to move to Stage 4. Had three public community sessions. And I think it's important to mention, in addition to those community sessions, a lot of planning went in that involved time with our principals, almost a pre and post session was held with every school by the architects as they looked at and as we went through the process of presenting the findings, evaluating how those plans looked, and then updating those plans. And again, those plans are still currently being updated. We're still having those conversations with our principals. And our principals did an outstanding job presenting that information to their community. And I'm going to show a couple of the drawings in a second and probably will not do justice to what those principals did as they talked about how it impacts their building, both from an educational standpoint and as we talked about some of the capital needs as well. Also worth mentioning that we had the, we had an oversight committee that met quite a bit during this timeframe to put together these presentations for the community, work with the principals, work with facility staff in crafting these presentations. And then ultimately, before we went out to the community for these three sessions, we had our community engagement team, which also reviewed the presentations, gave their input, we made modifications, and then ultimately went to the community. Each of the sessions was unique. We had, again, principal participation. We had an open house session that went, we had at the third, excuse me, at the fourth, community engagement session. So it's been a long process that have involved a lot of people, it's been very public. And then finally, as Dr. Schuler mentioned, the board facility committee has been key and integral as we've updated them on the process and where, in the direction of the facility master planning. It's been a fluid process as we've adapted and tried to meet the goals of trying to get that community input as well as getting to the ultimate goal of a facility master plan that we plan to bring to the board in April and beyond this timeframe. And the schedule is obviously, the board's aware, we've scheduled a workshop at the end of April to, once the, we're actually going to ask the board to accept the final document, to start looking at the plans and prioritizing the needs that the board wants to take forward. Just going to run through a couple of buildings here. I'm not, as Dr. Schuler mentioned, not going to mention all 20. And again, I don't think I could probably do it justice when we talk about it. But we picked up, you know, elementary schools. And again, we, every plan, we started out with, you know, these base designs based off the, you know, the facility analysis findings and then trying to, again, tie in that educational piece. And we noted, and I know this is probably hard to read, but I know most of the board attended some or all of the sessions and saw the principals present out and talk about some of the educational things with collaborative spaces, LLC spaces, and obviously that safety and security piece. Lowell's a prime example of one of the schools. You can look down there, number 3 ties directly into the safety and security piece for the school. Once we did that, you know, when we got to the final community engagement session, the cost was something. And the board also has a copy of the key that we tried to put a range, dollar range. And again, this was shared out at the last community engagement session. And we also included that capital needs as part of our capital plan. You know, in the bottom right corner, you can see the capital needs. And again, as we talk about that cost estimating planning process, that's where we're going, we go to really tie those two together and decide what our priorities are. That capital piece is obviously a piece we have to keep on our radar and pay attention to as well. So this was just a chart. You can see, and again, it's very small, but you can see we've got those dollar signs tied into the different options that were put in there for the educational analysis. Moving to Edison, and again, as we got into the schools with multiple floors, we've, you know, different floor design, SNAPA type of thing, looking at collaborative spaces and again, some resizing of some rooms with science and other things. As you go through, the library at Edison obviously was a key item. And then again, you look at collaborative spaces on all the floors and right there on the first floor in the upper left is some of the science reconfiguration to right-size those science rooms and again, provide that secure entrance. So once people come into the building, they find their way through the front office and we have some controls on those. Because in some big buildings, again, if you buzz in, we do buzz people in, they do have access right away to their building. We have to direct them into our offices. And again, that safety and security piece is very important. And we've got the, again, the dollar signs attached to the building as well. We, Wardville South, Dave's got his drawings right up. He has them in the front of the building, but in the library here tonight for a closer look for folks coming in. But again, you can see some of the work. There's some things on Dave's list that, again, at South are probably future 10 years out type things. But also, we have the LLC and talked about how we can do more with Resource Labs and some other spaces. One of the items on there, number 8, is the bleachers, which we talked about at the last, in the facility committee, is being moved up to a summer project. So that's something we'll be bringing to the board here in the future. But again, we, again, did the same type of process with the high schools. And again, they've been more recently touched. So there wasn't as much that is needed at the high school level. But again, there are some of those educational aspects we want to get to. And then again, just including some of, you know, the community was able to see and Dave was able to report out on what some of the costs are associated with it as well as the operational costs there in the lower right corner. Moving on, finally, Jefferson. This is, there are a few options that we looked at and landed on this one to meet. Again, this is a design plan that shows Jefferson with renovations and additions to meet, try and meet those program needs of the building. And I think it's, if you look in the bottom right-hand corner, there's a range in there of estimated cost to do that work. Again, this is one of the buildings that had an addition as part of it. And this just illustrates, again, kind of back to the basics here with looking at what were the needs. And you can see there are quite a few, again, to add in the amount of space and the right type of space to meet the operational, or meet the educational goals and program goals of that building. Again, letting the program drive the design of the building. So again, a lot of work has gone on. You know, that chart I showed you, there's a lot of things that happened in between. And so we, tonight, we're asking the board to move to Phase 4 in the process, which gets us to that final facility master plan that would be brought to you in April, again, in front of that April 30th meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Farley. And just one other thing I wanted to mention, even since our last community engagement session, some of the design concepts that you saw even at the community engagement session have shifted slightly. So based on feedback from that session, based on continued conversation with our, with our buildings, we've continued to modify those needs in anticipation of delivering a report. So what you saw up there, we have some iteration. And many of our buildings were on iteration number four or five as we've looked at some of those. But there is a design concept for each of the buildings. We did not, for this evening, attach all 20 of the most recent design concepts for the board because, again, they're still in progress. Back to that initial chart, the goal wasn't to show the board tonight a design concept for each building. That's Phase 4. Phase 4 is the preparation of the report to be delivered to the board so that you can begin your discussion and work around prioritizing. And again, I should mention that I think Mr. Farley, he talked about the delivery of that in April. We're not asking the board to approve a master facility plan certainly on the night that it's being delivered to you. It's a report that you tasked us to develop and we're going to bring to the board and then begin the discussion around how do you want to prioritize elements from within that master facility plan and sequence, you know, any work that you might want to address. So that's really, that's where we are in the process. And again, our recommendation, certainly this evening, is that you give us the approval, or we recommend that you approve, the development of Phase 4. Truly, to not do that at this point would say that, you know, really three-quarters of the way or more into the process, that just means you're not going to get a final report if we don't move forward with that final phase.
I have a question in regards to Jefferson. We have a remodel that's up there, a renovation. Are we also going to be presented with the option, I'm not saying that this is the route we should go, but I would like to be able to at least see the option of a new build? Or are we looking at property of a building that we can, another building, a separate building that we can be looking at? Because I feel like we put out there a few years ago, a referendum for a new building. Now we're not even looking at a new building. I just, I think to do something comprehensive, are we going to get that in Phase 4 to at least be able to see options? And maybe that's the case for other buildings too. Are we looking, I'm not saying to build, but I'm saying options with, is that something that's coming out of Phase 4?
Yes, we are looking at multiple options. So again, I guess the board has from, I think the discussion several years ago, you have a, more than a concept for a new building, right? So I think you looked at a new building option. What we focused on to this point through the facility master planning process is a renovation expansion option that would at least serve program needs. It does not mean that's going to be your only option to consider. As we get into prioritizing of options, we are looking both at a new building concept that you already considered a couple of years ago. We have looked at some new space options elsewhere beyond just right on that side. So to answer your question, in short, when you are considering or making, you know, prioritizing, this is not the only concept you will be looking at for Jefferson. What we focused on through this was getting at least a base renovation expansion option so that, again, we could reconfirm, as you did last time, that you had discussion around Jefferson. You didn't just look at a new building option. The board also considered a number of other renovation expansion options and ultimately landed. a number of other renovation expansion options, and ultimately landed on the decision you will have similar information.
Okay, and just a more follow-up question, so with Level Four, we're going to be able to then have kind of a menu of costs per building, where we're gonna be able to kind of prioritize and figure out and look at a, you know, maybe an eight to 10-year plan that's out there, am I, I'm getting, am I understanding, that's kind of what the Level Four is gonna be able to bring us, so that we can prioritize, these are, you know, and what use Level, because of phase four, this Level One and Level Two, you know, facility needs, as well as some of the advanced learning opportunities, where you'll be able to kind of pick and choose and prioritize?
Phase Four is intended to bring you the information you need to approach that prioritization, and I guess one last thing I wanted to mention on this, is that the cost estimates that are on the drawings, the example that Mr. Farley shared with you this evening, that's an estimate that's built on a concept drawing at this point, that's the other reason why the Facility Committee recommended that we begin the process of putting on an RFQ to look at some other cost estimates, you may not choose, once you get the final report, there may be some items that the Board says, we don't want to do any cost estimating on those, we're not interested in those ideas, there may be some items that you say less affirm, you know, the cost specific to these items at, you know, these buildings, so yes, the plan is to give you all of the information, or at least a start at, you know, at the information you need to prioritize a plan in the immediate, prioritize, you know, kind of long-term, how you want to address your facilities.
And Chris, to further expand on that, just for the record, so everyone knows, we have tentatively set up April 30th as a day Saturday for all of us to get together, assuming, again, assuming we pass the action item tonight whereby we would take a look at that master facility plan that's been presented to us, and start making those type of decisions or considerations.
I'm still a little bit uncertain, again, about Jefferson, and I don't know if the Phase Four report will address this or not, but, you know, when we ran the referendum for a new building, we pretty thoroughly studied renovation, and after much discussion and deliberation, although it wasn't with a lot of community engagement, but with the Board, to whom the community entrusted our, their faith, you know, we decided that it really was not very feasible to do a renovation, because of the fragile nature of the students, and how would we do it over so many years, and all of that, is the final report going to provide then two options for Jefferson, a renovation, and what are we gonna do with the kids in the meantime, are those issues going to be addressed in that report, so that the Board then can look at both options with a full understanding of the costs involved, or are we just gonna be in the same place where we are today, where we, you know, we have a concept, but we don't really have a clear understanding of the true cost of renovation and versus build new? I mean, I think that's very important, that we have that understanding, and I think it's very important that the community have that understanding as well, I don't want, I almost feel that the community has been, you know, presented with a single option, meaning renovation, and if that ends up to be not feasible, or not doable, or not the least cost option, is there gonna be some surprise there, or how are we gonna handle that, because I'm not thinking that that's gonna be where we land, at least where I'm, you know, where I'm thinking I'm gonna land, I'm not feeling really comfortable with that right now, how are we gonna deal with that in Phase Four, and is that gonna be addressed in Phase Four? Are we gonna get any recommendations?
Yeah, you're gonna get a report, I don't know that the report itself is gonna say, here is the recommended option, because again, I think that's really the decision that the Board needs to make, now, you can certainly ask administratively our recommendation as we get into that prioritizing, we'll be happy to share it. To the cost element, we certainly, the costs that we've estimated for a renovation expansion option have factored in transition costs, the direct costs related to transition, now, you know, if you're doing a renovation option that takes multiple years to implement, there are indirect costs as well, in terms of, you know, how do you program for students, but any of the anticipated direct costs, we've considered in any estimates that we've worked with at this point, so...
Direct, are putting the students elsewhere, maybe renting space to house the students in the interim, are you considering those direct costs, or are those the indirect costs?
I would consider rental space to be a direct cost.
And those are gonna be in here?
Correct.
Yeah, Bart, I attended the presentation by Perkins and Will with respect to the renovation proposal for Jefferson, and it was just one option that was gonna be presented in the ultimate report, and they addressed, one of the parents there addressed the issue a lot, well, what are you gonna do with the kids during the time that this is undergoing renovation, they described some of the things, but they said those were indirect costs, they also confirmed with Jeff, that the direct costs, which Jeff has identified, have been included in the cost range there, but he did acknowledge the indirect cost, but he gave some examples of what those were during the presentation.
Bill's provided us just three slides from three different buildings, or four different buildings, I guess the question is, why can't we, as a Board, see all those numbers and information before we move to the next phase? I mean, it's there, obviously, they've done the work, we've paid for it, I'd like to maybe, maybe to Mr. Matheson's earlier comment about, I can't read your mind, but I'm suggesting maybe there wasn't enough information for you to consider what's going on tonight, or making a vote on it, and I may be in that same boat, I'm just curious why we can't have a packet of that information, review it, and that might provide a little more sensitive knowledge about making a vote on the next step, for me personally, I was just curious why we don't have an opportunity to review what Bill's shared with us tonight for all buildings.
There's no reason in particular, again, that information was out there and available at the Community Engagement Session, we can certainly provide for you the most recent concepts that we have, again, I guess, let me just be clear that whatever we would have put up into the Board packet, some of them have already changed, based on work that we've done, you know, as a follow-up, but Board, any document that's been shared with the public, again, you know, you see the Boards that Mr. Claypool's got out here, we've got those for each of our buildings, we can share those with the Board.
Earlier, I mentioned that we might want to table this, and let me go through the logic of how I'm getting there, and I, based on our hand vote before, I don't think the tabling is the issue here, but, you know, here's where I'm at on this, you know, we had Phase One and Two, which we approved back in June of whatever, then in, you know, I think last year, we went on to Phase Three, and at the time we did Phase Three, you know, and these are right, direct quotes from the, from the minutes, at that time, or at the end of, let me go back a second here, it says, stay that some of the work in this report will take place in Phase Three, if the Board approves that tonight. Future community engagement sessions are planned in December and February, at that time, another report will be brought to the Board to decide whether to move forward on Phase Four or not, okay? And my point tonight is that we have kind of the summary document here, I think we have all the numbers that we, you know, are substantial numbers that are out there now, and I'm disappointed, I guess, in the, what I perceive to be the report, we set up this contract to have decision points in, and I feel like at this point, I don't have anything more to make a decision than I had, you know, before, I mean, this report really doesn't tell me how much, and at the community engagement sessions, we've had, I think the first one I went to, we had pretty good solid numbers, or numbers presented, whether they were solid or not, I don't know, but, you know, cumulatively, we have a big number we're building up here. At the last Board meeting, or the community, the whole meeting, we talked about a, another phasing, another contract to deal with fine-tuning the costs, okay? So, I'm looking at this and saying, are we prudently spending all the dollars we have available there? You know, number one, we're talking about $40,000 here, and I think the quote on the fine-tuning of costs was another 30, so now we had another 70 grand we're committing to, but we haven't addressed, one, the point being taken about, you know, Jefferson, I mean, you know, it's still to me, we have a conceptual issue that we have to talk about in Jefferson, I'm ready to talk about that now, based on the numbers we have, and I would hope, I was hoping that report that we would get now would give us that ability to do that. So, I think we are moving to a direction where we keep just fine-tuning costs, and we're not addressing the grill in the room, is that how do we fund it all? And so I feel like, you know, we can get, you know, a little tighter number doing this, a little tighter doing that, but we still haven't addressed the big picture issue of how do we fund all this stuff? You know, these are all big numbers, and, you know, I, you know, we've talked about, we can't identify the number, well, we've got identified numbers every community engagement session, so, you know, I feel like we need to talk about this more in the whole big picture sense, in that big picture being, how do we approach that whole issue, okay? I mean, I don't want to spend, you know, 15 hours talking about the alternatives on Jefferson, and not address the other, whatever number we're talking about here, because I think we're ready to do that, and I think we, as a Board, can focus on, you know, some of these, elimination of some of these things, or, you know, try to fund, or decide how we're gonna fund it, I guess is a better question. So, you know, I just, I feel like we're spending money to fine-tune a program that we don't even know if we can afford it yet, and that's why I'm having trouble with going on Phase Four, the contract originally had decision points in it, and I think we're at a decision point, but I don't have the information to make the move forward, okay? And then going one step further, we're now talking about another contract to fine-tune even further, and it seems so far ahead of where we are, and that is the funding issue, you know, you know, we can come up with the, you know, dollar projection that's gonna be within two cents, and, you know, but again, how do we fund it? So, that's where I'm having a little trouble on approving this, moving forward, you know, I think we have some very big conceptual issues, and that's how we're gonna fund this thing, we talked about it a little bit in the Finance Committee, in the presentation by the consultant, you know, but, you know, I just feel like we're getting ahead of ourselves until we address that issue, you know, to tune this up tighter and tighter, you know, we started this thing off with a, I think the term is the master facility plan, which is different than this master planning device, you know, the one that Mr. Robinson had put together, basically, and that one, you know, that gave us a big number, and then now we're, you know, now this whole process is giving, I guess, confirming that number, I don't know, you know, I mean, that's my mindset a little bit, so we're kind of, you know, repeating ourselves, but we still haven't talked about the cost, and that's where I'm really struggling with, you know, why should we spend another 40, and then another 30 to address these things, you know, I just, you know, until we know what we can focus on, if we say our budget's gonna be 40 grand, we've defined all the things that we can approach it, you know, and I think if we say to the architects, based on all this summary work, $40 million is all we can do, you know, give us a $40 million report, okay, and that's, I think I need to know that, before I would vote to approve this, and that's why I want, I had the suggestion of tabling it till a later date when we have our session on April 30th, to talk about the focus of what we're doing, and I would hope in that meeting, we have the ability to say, we gotta fund it somehow, because otherwise, the conversation is worthless to me, you know, if we come up with a number that's not fundable, or whatever, you know, that is a big problem for me, so, that's kind of what I, where I was at on that, and that's why I'm kind of blocking it at this, and we'd like to potentially table it, or, you know, I'm not convinced I want to spend these 40, or the 30 thereafter, until we address the bigger picture, and that's how it all goes together. Thank you.
Could I ask a question, and maybe this is what you were gonna address, but can you, in a nutshell, maybe define for us, you know, Mr. Matheson, and, you know, and I think maybe all of us as well, what are we going to have in our hands at the end of Phase Four?
First impression.
Okay, good, versus what we have at the end of Phase Three, I kind of figured that maybe was why, but I sort of wanted to express what I'm hearing as Mr. Matheson's concerns, you know, it kind of in my own words and the own question I had in my mind, so, it's all yours.
So much I could talk about. First off, Jim, I don't know where the $30,000 number came from, I don't remember ever seeing it for fine-tuning, I don't think the Facility Committee's ever discussed that.
I watched the blog, in the blog, there was a talk about another cost study, and I heard a quote of 30.
Is that the Ten Year Life Safety Survey?
No.
Yeah.
It was a fine-tuning.
We have, so we have a RFP out right now for cost estimated services and construction management services, the intent of that is when we get the final master plan draft on April 13th, which is kind of the individual needs by building, which is still being refined...
Which is what?
No, the final report.
Well, I mean, the report that would be generated by Phase Four.
Correct, the draft master plan. We would then take that, and as a Board, decide how are we going to approach and prioritize the immediate needs, long-term needs, how do we fold in the deferred maintenance or physical condition needs, which is the capital facility plan we've had for a long time, that's the piece that we started with a year or so ago, so, the way this will develop is that we'll get this draft, or final draft master plan from Perkins and Will, we'll be able to review that as a Board, as, when I work with school districts, I never want them to approve a master plan until there's a lot of discussion about other feedback, other ideas for Jefferson, I'll get to Jefferson in a moment, how we go, how we develop the priorities, we give feedback to the architects, everybody's different pieces of it, we'll have that conversation starting on the 13th, we have a follow-up workshop on April 30th, I'm under saying it's not tentative, it's set.
That's right.
And that's, we know that we can't fund the entire thing, we have a lot of these where big district, one of the biggest districts in the state, we've talked about that, so that's our opportunity as a Board to begin discussing for a period of months, how we're gonna look at priorities, what different ways that we can package the work, which we think are, what we've heard from the community would be the most important things, and we'll go through an analysis with our architects and with our newly selected cost estimator to evaluate and put some more definitive costs to these solutions. The solutions we see right now are very broad ranges, they're just like taking a square footage of an area and putting a general unit cost to it, we anticipate that the cost estimated company when they get on board will be a little bit more definitive and more detailed, and not only what the cost estimate is, but also how do we do it, that's a big issue, especially at Jefferson, so, we haven't touched really in detail on how do we do it, do we build it all in, you know, a fall, and a spring, and a summer, which is one thing we could do, it's a little bit more difficult for that, that age group, versus do we have to move the kids and put them in a different location, and how does that play in the different options we might see for Jefferson? So, that is, this is approving Phase Four and approving the master plan, or reviewing the master plan on April 13th is the culmination of what the community told us in Engage 200. If you go back to July 2014, Engage 200 recommendation, I guess that's the theme of the night, was to identify and prioritize district-wide facility and technology needs for the delivery of instruction and co-curricular programming based on 21st century best practices, and develop a facility master plan to address them. So what we've been doing from June through April is what our community recommended we did, if we stop shorting now, we haven't completed that recommendation. Regarding the funding, first off, I would, you know, when you say establish a dollar amount and try to work a plan into that, that's a recipe for failure, I think the objective, the purpose of this master plan is to develop what the needs are, figure out what our priorities are, and then develop a plan and a series of funding options to address it, we begun the funding discussion back in January, you were at that meeting, so, we haven't, it's not like we haven't talked about it, we looked at four different scenarios that would enable us to begin to have that conversation and think as Board, what different ways to do it, we don't know what the specific dollar amount is yet, so, you know, when we set out in this process last summer, the Facility Committee was lockstep, and we developed a proposal with Perkins and Will, we aligned the scope with what we thought our available funding was, we broke it up into four, three different approvals, we did the first one on June 10th, we did the second one on October 14th, the next one is tonight, this is the last one, this is exactly how we laid it out as a Board, to get to this step so that we could finish the master plan, and to deliver what Engage 200 said we should do. And to deliver what Engage Two Hundred said we should do. So we're following up on Engage Two Hundred. Multiple times we've heard about that tonight. Um, so I, the way, that's the way I see the process. We've been, as a committee, pretty lockstep and involved in how we, how we go through this effort. Um, we're not there yet. What we have right now is not a completed plan, it's the, up until the final step of that plan. In terms of Jefferson, um, you know, I kind of feel like Barb and Chris that what we've done here is just really develop a baseline. We've, I felt it was important coming out of the last referendum to relook at and reanalyze, okay, so here's all of our needs for best serving our early childhood program in the district, which is in five different locations now, not just Jefferson. We keep talking about it as Jefferson, it's really about our early childhood program. I felt it was important to reanalyze that, come up with as good a solution as we can through a renovation and addition option, and use that as our baseline. I had the same expectation that we're going to go through and develop different options that we can see, hopefully that comes in phase four, so that we as a board can begin to analyze what the solutions are, how we, how we could build it and construct it, what the impact on kids is during that time, and, and have a good conversation about, we're going to make a big investment in that building to support that program and those kids, what's the best way? What's the best way to do it? That conversation will really start in earnest on April thirtieth, and will probably go for several months, and there's probably more opportunity for community input there, even though we've had four sessions. There's probably more conversation and surveys, and maybe it's a different kind of format to do that. So we're not done with Jefferson, but I think what we've developed is a very good baseline that says, here's the minimum we need to do, need to do to serve that program, and here's what the approximate cost is going to be. You know, I felt it was important to, to get to that new baseline, because anything back in two, the mid-two thousands through last year is, is old news. There's a lot changed in the construction economy. Any, any cost information on that is old, irrelevant. We needed to get a new baseline, and that's what we've seen tonight, that's what that process has developed. Now we need to begin developing the further options. So, and that's what we talked about at the last facility committee meeting. Jim and I shared some different options we wanted to get, uh, developed. So, that's, I guess, a lot. And as I look back, I've said this a couple of times already, this is all about what our community recommended we do. We made an investment in Engage Two Hundred. Heard about it on the, um, the math program that we approved tonight. We've continued to do it in technology, we've done it on the community engagement side with some of the activities we've taken. Now this is fulfilling the recommendation on the facilities. So, I think, you know, as a committee, I've, I've been speaking as myself, not as a committee, but as a committee, we've been, you know, consistent, at least until we get to the vote, about what our, um, what our approach is going to be in helping make recommendations to guide, to guide the solution, so. I believe this is the right step, I believe this is where the board needs to go in the next couple of months. Um, I believe this is consistent with what our community told us, and I think, I think that's what we need to do.
Would you say of that forty thousand, uh, biggest chunk of it is the estimator's work? Because I certainly totally understand they're throwing, you put general numbers on things, but I absolutely would love to have the, you know, real numbers, because they, I don't know how we can go to the public without, you know, just a ballpark. We have to know our numbers.
If you look at each one of those screens, they have individual numbers for, or individual ranges for each of the the targeted areas, and at the bottom right corner of each of those slides, there's a, there's a range that says, okay, for rural schools, it's this to this. So we have that number. That's, that's to deal with the educational alignment program issues that we've developed for phase two. Separately, we have the capital facility plan, which is a whole different set of numbers, which often gets referred to. So, the master plan will put those two numbers together. It will be a very large number, something that we can't fund all at one time. So then we begin the process of looking at individual pieces, what are the priorities that we need to deal with now in individual schools? We as a board can look at different options and have a continued discussion once we get through this point.
Won't the range be narrowed down once the estimator gets out?
Yes, once, once we as a board say, okay, so what happens if we do A, B, and C at every building? That package will cost this much money. If we want to do just buildings A, D, and F, I'm just using letters rather, then this would be a different package. If we want to do only capital improvement, only the capital facilities plan and not do everything else, here's the different number. And that way, we'll be able to look as a board at different options, different priorities, and figure out what makes sense as a district, what makes sense financially for our community, and have that conversation. So we'll have very specific numbers, and that's the intent of the RFP that's out now, is to get a partner to really refine that further, and look more than just dollars, but how do we implement? How, how deep schedule phase in implementation over multiple years?
Do you think by April thirtieth we'll have, um, semi-realistic cost for a, a new Jefferson, since we really don't, do we have the layout?
I would anticipate we would, as part of phase four, have a, a different option for a new Jefferson, or a new building that serves an early childhood program. Um, we might want to get with our cost estimating company to begin that conversation in more depth, and, you know, starting at the April thirtieth meeting. I know we, we need to get to a more definitive cost estimate, so we can have detailed conversations. We can't get there if we don't do this. This is the whole point of it. The plan that we laid out back in June was to get to this point, so that we can answer all these things we're talking about.
Okay, so if I can get back to my, I'm sorry, did you want to, I can, I can wait. To get back to my question, um, so what we have now, first of all, we're not, we haven't refined all the design work. We're still getting feedback from staff, and basically, you know, what if we did this, this, and that? So, so we still have, uh, we have unrefined design work, and we have very rough cost estimates. And, and basically, the forty-four grand is going to get us to have a, a fairly firm design plan and somewhat better cost estimate. And then after that, well, now, when are, when are the cost estimators going to come in and do their thing? Is, is it going to be after April thirteenth and before April thirtieth? Or is, when is that going to come into play?
Answer, there's two things there. So, no, they won't be done by April thirtieth. We will approve them, start work April thirteenth, that's the plan. And they would begin working with us on April thirtieth to understand what our different priorities might be. The way we've written the RFP, there might be five different packages of priorities that we can discuss as a board. Then they'll spend, I don't know, May, June, July, working through different options, getting feedback from us, reworking options, developing new options. This is what, this is going to be a very dynamic process throughout the summer. It's very iterative. So, um, that's where the process of our feedback as a board begins to, to look at the different priorities and different ways that we can attack this initially. Uh, in terms of more definitive designs, I just want, yes, we're going to have a more refined solution, but we're still at the very master planning conceptual stage. These, these designs are nowhere near ready to, I mean, we're not putting doors in yet. We're not trying to figure out mechanical systems, they're very basic planning, high-level planning, uh, tools for us.
And to just get back to the, the, you know, we've had this discussion, you know, a couple of times before, and I, and I appreciate, you know, wanting to, to start with what we can afford. But I, I do think, in this case, because we can't afford much of anything if we don't do some sort of revenue enhancement, um, I, I do think it is important to at least have the vision in hand. And then if we back off from the vision and say, well, maybe we can reach that vision over ten years, or maybe the vision's too high, maybe we can't do, you know, green screen rooms in, in our middle schools. Yeah, I mean, I'm, but at least if we have the, the vision, then we can back off and say, okay, um, realistically, we don't think we could fund more than, you know, fifty percent of this vision, so how are we going to do that? What are we going to do, and what are we not going to do? I, I'd rather have the whole big picture that I can choose from than, than, um, you know, than start, uh, you know, piecemeal. I'm just, that's just the way I like to think, um, so.
In response to that, you know, I, I think you're describing, and I just heard that April thirtieth, we will not have the cost study done anyway. So when we meet on April thirtieth, we're not going to have that, that program. So, you know, we're implying that we're going to have it, we're not. You know, they, we won't engage practically anybody at that point. So I'm not sure we're going to have a lot more fine-tuned data at that point. I also feel that we've been going to the community on whatever number of these community sessions, and every time, we presented a number. And that number came from somewhere. So now if we're going to say that number is completely off the wall, and, you know, I think we're misleading the community then. And, you know, so I feel like we have enough data right now to have a serious conversation about, you know, what we need to do here. And, and I just heard the deliverable on, I, I'm clear, I'm not clear what the deliverable is on phase four. I don't know that we've addressed the question about Jefferson. I, I, you know, where do we enter into that conversation to have this additional cost alternative? You know, is that coming out of the cost study? Is that coming out of phase four? I just don't know what phase four vision is, because I, I expected that we would have an accumulation of all the community engagement things as part of the deliverable today to make sense of whether we want to proceed with phase four. And so I, I'm just struggling with, what are we going to gain by phase four? Because we have a lot of detail. And, you know, I, we're going to talk for, you know, an all-day session on, uh, April thirtieth. I'd rather talk about the ballparks we've got now and say, you know, we can't afford this or that, or, you know, give me a, we have to have summary somewhere. Call it what you want, a failure to be wrong or lose or whatever. You know, I, I just don't know how we can talk, I don't want to talk on April thirtieth about a hundred different alternatives that aren't fundable. I can't say it in a better way. I just, you know, I think that we, you know, I, I just feel like we have enough information to have our meeting, discuss the alternatives that are going to go forward, and I'd like to then use that forty grand to maybe fine tune some of those specifics. And, and that's what I think we should be getting out of phase four. Because, you know, so that, that's where I'm struggling with the approval of this tonight.
Well, I have a different view, Jim, and I respectfully disagree. I heard that from Brad that we're going to, the whole approach with respect to Jefferson during these phases here was to come up with a baseline approach. Uh, how we can renovate the existing building to serve the needs of our children. It may not be the optional approach, but it's the baseline approach, um, based on current construction practices, current education practices for that age group and the kids with those challenges. That's Jefferson. Um, with respect to our other buildings, primarily our middle schools, there are substantial recommendations made through this iterative process we have gone through for both, for Edison, Monroe, and Franklin. And, um, community feedback is how we find some of that. Uh, but we haven't gotten a final proposal from Perkins at Will with respect to our middle schools. I'd like to see that. Um, I don't anticipate that on April thirtieth, we're going to have a hundred different options to choose from. We're going to have a number of different options to choose from, and it's going to take a full day to narrow those options down. And to share those options then with our, um, construction management firm that we retained, to give us some firm numbers on what those options that we've identified on April thirtieth may be. We get that figure back from our, our, our construction management firm that we've retained, and we decide, well, maybe we need to make a, a few more adjustments over May and June after getting community input. That's the iterative process I see we're going through, and I think it's a good iterative process, because we're, we're engaging the community, the community's going to be convinced that we looked at all the options, that we've carefully considered the price, we've carefully considered the costs. And, and we just haven't assumed, for example, in Jefferson, that we're going to go with a new building, that we've looked at an existing building, and what it would cost to renovate that existing building, and taken both the direct cost and indirect cost into consideration, when, when we've adopted the final solution. Uh, so I support this, uh, motion. I believe we should engage phase four and proceed as we planned way back last June, and be responsive to the recommendations we've received from the community in our three engagement sessions of two years ago. Is there a motion to approve, um, the X, Y, to approve phase, uh, implementing phase four of this effort? Some would. Moved by Mr. Paulson?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mrs. Zentihar. Senator, would you please call a vote?
Mrs. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Zentihar?
Yes.
Mrs. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Maddison?
No.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Yomani?
No.
Mr. Roman?
Yes. The motion passes? Well, written reports are the next item on the agenda. We've all received the monthly financial reports and the FOIA requests. Uh, after that, we have reports from board members. Are there any, uh, committee reports? Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, let's see here, we met, um, uh, back on February eleventh, and Faith did the presentation for us on the Math Instructional Coaches. Uh, we also talked about the school calendar and, um, had asked administration to give us rationale behind, um, different dates and that, and, you know, that we have within the calendar, um, you know, wanting Institute Day prior to the start of school, things that were, um, that they felt didn't want touched. And then the other items went on to, uh, the survey for us to look at. Uh, we were given an update on, um, the science standards, and heard a little bit about what was going to be happening at the Institute Day, as well as the, um, the fickle which they gave the presentation for at the last committee event, which was very exciting to see actual stuff that was happening out within the classroom. Did I miss anything, Mark?
On February twenty-three, the Human Resources and Policy Committee met, and we met with Professor Jonathan Eckert from Wheaton College, who was, uh, working with our, um, our teacher administrative committee on an alternative to salary schedule, coming up with that. Uh, Professor Eckert's an impressive gentleman. Um, he taught in District Two Hundred for six years in a middle school, taught science. After that, he received his PhD at Vanderbilt in education. And he worked in the Department of Education, both in the Bush administration and the Obama administration. And his, his area of, of focus while working in the Department of Education was working on a, uh, grant incentive program the federal government was funding on teacher incentives, compensation incentives. So he saw firsthand, um, options that were being implemented, um, to reward good teaching habits, good teaching, and, and as an alternative to a salary schedule. Um, he's written two white papers on that. He's now, uh, teaching, um, a professor of education at Wheaton College. He's already met with the, uh, joint committee, kind of laid some, uh, ground rules for the committee, and he's identified, he asked us, um, at the outside of the committee of our meeting with him, um, why is it that we think we'd like to look at an alternative to the salary schedule? And both Chris and I mentioned, we think it's financially, we can't keep, keep doing it. It's, it's not sustainable financially, uh, just to keep giving raises to people for sticking around and teaching for another year. And, and we also want to mention that we want to compensate good teaching. And he said, those are the common reasons for abandoning the salary schedule. He told us that the original reason the salary schedule was adopted was to eliminate any, uh, possibility of discrimination either based upon race or gender of teachers that had been taking place before that, as a neutral program. Um, but now we open, we're at a stage culturally and as a society where we can get beyond that and really reward good teaching. Um, so he asked the teachers, um, at initial meetings, why they got into teaching? What incentivized them to get into teaching? And starting to focus on where we can really truly, uh, offer enhancements. You know, so it's just beginning. Uh, we got, uh, some insight into the direction it's going, but it's just beginning. And he admitted that there isn't much data out there right now. Many of these incentive programs have not been in place long enough to get any trend data.
data. So we're going to be innovative here, it seems like, and we're going to monitor this process very closely. The other thing we mentioned, help me here, Dr. Schuler, you mentioned there was a Senate Bill One Hundred that's been passed that may have some impact on policy.
Yeah, Senate Bill One Hundred is the, the new discipline policy, and actually Dr. Rammer's going to be bringing the board an update, I think at your next meeting, just on, in anticipation of kind of the first round of policies, handbook changes that you'll have to revise in accordance with them. We're going to set a little foundation at the, the next meeting for you.
And also the General Assembly passed legislation allows middle schoolers to earn high school credit for taking courses. It hasn't been implemented yet. We're doing some preliminary studies on that. There are some complications that need to be addressed with that process. So that's something we may be addressing sometime in the future. So just keep your mind open on that.
Items on the other topics, I'd be curious of what, what topics have been addressed, being addressed by the Citizen Advisory Committee recently. I think we have attendance periodically at those from board members, but, and then in addition, on this Friday, I'm, I've been asked by the School Board Association to partake in the Share the Success Panel Review Committee, which will be the committee that decides the topics. It'll be on the November meeting for the two thousand sixteen School Board Conference in Chicago. And I've asked specifically to be involved with the master plan subcommittee, no. I bet that's, I'll be looking at a ball.
I would say the Facility Committee has no report.
And just a report to the board, I was invited to attend a screening yesterday by the, sponsored by the Illinois Education Association of a movie called Paper Tigers. It's about an alternative high school in Walla Walla, Washington. What this school is doing for kids who are really at risk at the high school level is amazing. And I looked at it and was so amazed by what these teachers are doing at this high school, but also so thankful that we don't have the extent of that problem here in our district. It's just a real challenge, but it was eye-opening in many respects.
Have we had any recent CAC?
Last CAC meeting, I think, Barb, you're at, the, the last one, it was kind of in between the two community engagement sessions. That was one on facilities. And then we've got one coming up a week from tonight, I believe, is the next one. Topic of the next one is on technology and innovation, kind of discussion around future of instruction and technology, and some discussion on where we're going in that approach.
I think Chris asked a question last meeting, and then, will we get reports of what, if there's conclusions coming out of those? You know, again, that's, to me, is a, you know, an involved, kind of spread out community engagement program. I really would like to hear those as we, as, you know, I, I know the first one that I went, of course, did with the calendar and that, and I don't want to talk about that anymore. So, but this one, you know, I'd be curious to what the topics and some of the kind of consensus is coming out of.
What, well, Jim, the one I attended was Jefferson. So the calendar, Jefferson, I mean, that was, that was the main interest. That was what the group wanted to hear about. So, so that's what the administration, that was the information they provided to them. They asked a lot of good questions. And, you know, that was, but that took up the whole evening, really, Jefferson, yeah, so.
One other question about, I was talking about community engagement. I assume that now that we're moving forward on Phase Four, we will get information about the attendees of the various community engagement programs because I, I don't want to be making decisions on, without what I would call full breath type people. And I, I'm a little worried that we don't have that from some of these community engagements. You know, so, you know, I want to make sure that, that we hopefully have that data available to us when we look at it.
Topics for future discussion include the master facility plan report, review of staff development plan, and review of social emotional learning plan. We have, our chat with the board on April twelve, that date has been, was originally April nineteen, but it's now April twelve, two thousand sixteen, in Wheaton North, from eight AM to nine thirty AM. And our next regular meeting is April thirteen at seven thirty PM at Longfellow Elementary School. Do we have any public comments?
Yeah.
Well then, there being no further action, come before the board, no open session, and there is no close session. I ask for a motion of a second to adjourn the meeting. Some move? Moved by Mrs. Zenthar, seconded by Mr. Matheson. Ms. Center, would you please call a roll? Voice vote. No votes, we're adjourned.